Twenty first, twenty twenty two to order. And I would ask that you all please rise for a beef invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. It seems most fitting that on what is going to be Thanksgiving week, that Batavia this year truly has a lot of things to be very thankful and proud of. We've had some great success in attracting new businesses to town. We've got our long awaited renovation of the old city hall building underway. And more interestingly, we've gotten some really good success this year from the Batavia School District. And specifically, the fact that this coming Saturday, they are going to participate in the championship game over the Illinois State Football Championship in their class. And for that, we are ever so appreciative and mindful of the talent and the time and the commitment that has been made by all the players and the coaches and the cheerleaders and everybody involved. That they have truly presented a program this year that really makes Batavia very, very proud. So we go into the Thanksgiving season with a great appreciation in our hearts and minds that we are very fortunate to live in the community we do and be the home of so many grand and great and wondrous people who are God fearing and who work very, very hard to make our world a greater and kinder and more loving place for all of us to live and proudly call our home. As always, I just want to ask a special prayer tonight for all those from our community and from our country who are serving in foreign soil in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be powered and shown to each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. And as always, we want to ask for vision and direction and understanding for the members of the City Council as they vote on the items that are in the agenda before them. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation, our God, and the visible, living, and justice of all.
Let the city clerk, the please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Risotto.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Fourteen present to fourteen, Your Honor.
Let the record reflect that we have the necessary form to conduct business. As a reminder, I want to ask anybody who's going to speak to us tonight if you would come forward and use the podium specifically with the microphone because this is being photographed and will be rebroadcast on BATV. So if you don't speak into the microphone, people won't be able to hear what you're saying. So please, please do that. Moving to item five, do we have items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda from the City Council? Anybody on the council have anything? Let the record reflect there were none. Okay, we will move to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Indeed, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the building reports for October twenty twenty two, the committee of the whole minutes for October eleventh, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, historic preservation commission for October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, and approvals, November eleventh, twenty twenty two payroll an amount of one million, thirty-two thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars, seventy-eight cents. The accounts payable check register, an amount of three million, six hundred, thirty-nine thousand, seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. City Council minutes for November seventh, twenty twenty two. Resolution twenty-two dash one twelve dash R, accepting a deed for lands in and adjacent to the Windin Creek Development off McKee Street. Ordinance twenty-two dash sixty-one, proposing a disconnection of property from special service area number eleven. Ordinance twenty-two dash fifty-five, grant of onification or city code mobile home parks title, three, chapter nine, American Mobile Homes Communities LLC applicant. And resolution twenty-two dash one ten dash R, approving authorization to find insurance for property, liability, and workers' compensation. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any conversation with the City Council? City clerk call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Item seven is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wants to address us on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, I think the reason we have the crowd here, and we'll see it all diminish here in a few minutes, I'm going to ask Chief Hanson if he would come forward and introduce the four promotions from the Batavia Fire Department that we are about to do.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. It's obviously with great excitement that we're here tonight to promote four individuals. I want to thank the council for their support in this, in these promotions and also for approving not only their position but the additional deputy chief's position. So thank you very much. We're going to start tonight with John Lucas. Battalion Chief John Lucas has been with the Batavia Fire Department for sixteen years. Prior to joining the Batavia Fire Department, John served with the New Lennox Fire Protection District since nineteen ninety-three. He held the rank of lieutenant. He was, also worked as an adjunct faculty college of, at the College of DuPage in emergency medical, in the Emergency Medical Technician Program. He started as a full-time firefighter in Batavia in January two thousand and six. He was promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and thirteen and to battalion chief in two thousand and sixteen. He has a bachelor's degree in management from Benedictine University. He's a certified chief fire officer, a fire officer three, training program manager, fire apparatus engineer, health and safety officer. In addition, holds many additional certifications in specialties such as hazmat and rescue. And I am confident that with all his training, education, and work history, he will be a valuable ass to the city and to the Batavia Fire Department as he moves up into the rank of deputy fire chief. So this time I'd ask John to come forward and if, John, if you'd just step over for a minute and just kind of help us, help us introduce your family, members.
John, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Lucas.
I, John Lucas.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of deputy chief.
To the position of deputy chief.
On November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
On November twenty-first, twenty-two.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Effective November.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
City of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Page.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge.
Of deputy chief to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor to be a part of this organization and I look forward to the, to the future. Thank you.
You and I also have your oath of office all signed and sealed, so you really are official now.
And we're going to go ahead and have his son go ahead and pin his badge on for him.
No, no blood. We do have paramedics here. So we're good to go. John, did you want to introduce your family at all or?
This is my, my daughter McKinley. My mom, all the way up from Florida. Riley.
Yeah, since you came without a hat, we thought we'd give you one. Actually, I told him to come without a hat, so I'll give him that. Thank you, Mayor. The next promotion would be John Kessler. John Kessler has been with the Batavia Fire Department as our fire marshal for the last four years, following a nearly thirty-year service with the St. Charles Fire Department where he retired as, as a battalion chief. He had three additional years with the Geneva Fire Department. He is a certified fire officer two, fire inspector two, basic fire prevention officer, fire department incident safety officer, fire science instructor two, fire apparatus engineer, hazardous materials incident command, and he holds also another, many other additional certificates in specialties such as hazmat and rescue. I'm also confident that with all his training and education and his work history, he will be a valuable asset to the city and the Batavia Fire Department as he serves as our next, one of our next deputy fire chiefs. John, if you'd come up and Tommy, his son Tommy, front and center.
Put you right here in the.
Front and center.
Center of the action.
I'll give you this microphone.
Thank you.
John, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Kessler.
I, John Kessler.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of deputy chief.
To the position of deputy chief.
On November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
On November twenty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of deputy chief.
Of deputy chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I want to thank everybody for this opportunity to serve the Batavia Fire Department and the city of Batavia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just put it right there and we can.
And for our next distinguished guest in promotion, Robert Scott Hogan. Scott has been a firefighter here for the city of Batavia for thirty years. He is, he started his career as a paid-on-call firefighter on May twentieth, nineteen ninety-two. He was then appointed to a full-time firefighter in May of nineteen ninety-five and was promoted to lieutenant in January two thousand and six. Scott is also a certified firefighter three, a fire officer three, fire service instructor two, fire incident safety officer, fire investigator, and an arson investigator. He leads our investigations team for the city of Batavia Fire Department. He also holds numerous certifications in hazardous materials and rescue along with other years of training and experience. I am confident with all this training, education, and his dedicated work to the city of Batavia, he will be a valuable asset to the Batavia Fire Department as battalion chief. Scott, if you'd come on down, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get everybody here so we get you, way to get you on the camera here. He's got it.
I got it.
Oh, you got it. You already got it.
I don't know if it works.
Test it, see if it's on. Chief, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me the oath of office.
I, Robert Scott Hogan.
I, Robert Scott Hogan.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of battalion chief.
To the position of battalion chief.
On November twenty-first, twenty-two.
On November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Effective November twenty-first.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of battalion chief.
Of battalion chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm not much at speeches, just looking forward to the opportunities laying ahead for everyone in this department.
Here's your official oath of office.
Thank you.
Ouch.
He was heavy, yes. Yes. Grandpa's got to wear that with pride. And finally, but not least, of course, is Kale Lobaka. Kale Lobaka was hired as a full-time firefighter on January seventh, two thousand and two. Kale is a certified firefighter three, paramedic, fire officer two, fire instructor two. He also holds numerous certifications in hazardous materials and rescues along with other, along with many years of experience and knowledge that has helped the department over the years. Again, I'm confident with all this training, education, and work history, he will indeed be a valuable asset not only to the city of Batavia, but more importantly, to the Batavia Fire Department as our new lieutenant. So Kale, if you'll come up with your family, please.
We got to get you all appearing on camera and that's mounted on that pillar over there Okay, lieutenant, if you'd raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I, Kale Babaka.
I, Kale Lobaka.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of lieutenant.
To the position of lieutenant.
On November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
On November seventh.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Effective November twenty-first, twenty-two.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane.
In the counties of Kane.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Lieutenant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Like the rest of the guys said, we're looking forward to getting the department going again in the right direction. And I'd like to thank everybody that came out for the support tonight. This room is packed with people that care a lot about this department and the guys that are in it. So thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to thank my parents for coming out, Greg and Sandy, my son Sawyer, my wife Megan, and my daughter Charlotte.
Put the hat on for a picture. There you go. And I'll also say that Sawyer is an explorer with Auburn Fire Department Explorer's Troop and that's why he knew how to work the badge. So nice job. Thank you, Sawyer.
Looking good.
Now they can have a time and they can leave.
Again, council, I'd like to thank you for all your support. I believe this is a, I know it's an excellent leadership team. We have decades of experience here and we look forward to the future in serving our community and our citizens with pride. Thank you very much.
Well, that ends the oath of office ceremonies tonight, and I would certainly invite anybody that wants to leave to do so. You're not hurting our feelings. We fully appreciate, most people have other things to do on this weekend. So I'm going to just sit the council down here for a couple of minutes till most of you file out and so then we'll continue on with the meeting.
It's a big crowd. Just tell them to call it a tone and they'll all leave.
Yeah. Yeah, right here. Yes, sir. Right, just like brand new. Nice, same to you.
So how've you been?
I've been good. How about you?
Good.
Mayor, he said we could leave, right?
Hmm? He said we could leave, right?
I thought we were like approving an apartment building or something.
You said.
Yep. Too soon?
Oh, wait a minute.
It's just garbage bags.
I was going to say.
It's just a bag. So there'll just be like three loud voices.
Good times.
Yeah. 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 You got the other guy.
Yeah.
It was supposed to say.
We played at the beach.
Really? There's no.
Yeah, we didn't do any extra play stuff.
Sure. Proves our son actually came to us for Christmas because he was supposed to go his senior year for spring break at Alabama, but he canceled the day before they canceled the trip, so they would only give him credit in his work and doesn't have the time to take.
You went on a cruise?
Yeah.
Where?
Bahamas.
Nice.
Miami to Nassau.
Uh-huh.
Which is.
Oh, very cool.
Beautiful.
Was Kelly your travel agent?
No. She was on with last week with my other sister-in-law.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, like a brand-new ship that they, it was just all like traveling.
She's got a, she's got a good choice of job.
Yeah. She's doing well too.
Yeah, that's awesome.
After, after the pandemic, the pandemic was a.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if it started, but how it's, things are.
Yeah, that's awesome. I don't think.
Okay, we will reconvene the city council meeting.
I know it's only an hour.
And we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which Alderman Chanset, you're going to read this?
Yes, indeed. Your Honor, a proclamation. Whereas the city of Batavia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas there are thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, representing ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees and responsible for sixty-two percent of the net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, and whereas small businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas seventy-nine percent of consumers understand the importance of supporting small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, seventy percent report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently-owned retailers, and sixty-six percent report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas on Small Business Saturday in twenty twenty-one, fifty-eight percent of shoppers reported that they shopped online with the small business, and fifty-four percent of consumers reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe. And whereas Batavia, Illinois supports numerous restaurants and retail small businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy. And whereas the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, Batavia Main Street, along with advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two as Small Business Saturday in Batavia and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the proclamation as presented. I just would encourage the council's approval of this. This certainly speaks to a significant, proud tradition in Batavia where on that Saturday for many years, I don't ever know if we've ever proclaimed it, but that's always been a day in downtown Batavia that's kind of sparked the interest of local residents to go down and find out what's new in the shelves of our downtown businesses. And this year, we've had a wonderful restoration, I guess I would describe it, of downtown Batavia, of the small business community. And for a while, we had many vacant storefronts. Now we're almost filling them all up. And I think the trend is very strong in our community to support small business. And I've even had people tell me that they come down to ask a question before they moved into town. And one of the things they told me they were moving in here about beyond the success they see in the school system was the friendliness of the downtown business community. So I think this really is a, a major attribute of Batavia that speaks wonders about what we are all about. We are extremely blessed in our community to have the store owners and people who have come up with these ideas to bring these businesses into our downtown because it has put a whole new face on the community. As recent as about two hours ago, I received a phone call from the now mayor of Hampshire, Illinois, and he was going to call me next week to set a date when he can come down and I can walk him through downtown Batavia and he can understand more about what's going on here. Because he says he hears wondrous things about what we're doing in Batavia and he'd like to, I think, help himself to a few of our ideas, which is fine. But I mean, that's kind of what's going on here. So as the clerk, I guess, to call the roll, did we call the roll?
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Proclamation is approved. Okay, moving to item ten, which is tonight's Main Street report. And I see we have our representative from Main Street here. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Desler. I'm the Assistant Director at Batavia Main Street. Beth is on vacation this week, so I have the pleasure of speaking with you all and giving our update. We are in the process of finalizing our twenty twenty-three event season. We'll be, we hope to release all of our dates for those events in December. The indoor market is currently going on. It's being held at the dock at one. going on. It's being held at the dock at 151st Street on, from 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays, and we are very appreciative to BEI for hosting the market. We have a great variety of vendors from the, a lot of the outdoor farmer's market favorites that many of you know and love, as well as a few new vendors to the indoor market. We had Winterfest Art Market a few weeks ago, and that was also held at 151st Street and 161st Street. We had about 1,500 people attend that event over the course of the weekend, and we felt that that was a great success. And then speaking of Shop Small Saturday, our retail videos are still being posted. We've had great reception with those posts throughout the month. We have four more videos to go up between now and Thanksgiving, and then we will, of course, be reminding our residents to shop small on Saturday as well. You can now find a Small Business Saturday video channel on BATV where all the videos are posted, and they're also being played on BATV's channel. And we just wanted to thank the city again for funding that project because it's been a really well-received. Our holiday decor competition has started between the merchants in downtown, so when you're shopping local on Saturday, if you keep an eye out for the QR codes in those participating businesses, you can scan that to vote for your favorite, and we'll announce a winner for that on December 20th. And then finally, the boardwalk shops are wrapping up their season on December 18th. We will host Sundays with Santa and Mrs. Claus from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. on November 27th, December 4th, 11th, and 18th. This is a free event for families, and so we encourage people to keep shopping the boardwalk and come out and see Santa as well, including our October sales. The boardwalk shop sales have now exceeded $1 million since their inception in 2020, so we were excited to share that great success with you all tonight. And Hazelry, one of our boardwalk shops, just opened a brick-and-mortar store in Glen Allen this month, and then Arlo Hendricks, another one of our boardwalk shops, will be joining the Wilson Street Mercantile in their brick-and-mortar location in January. So we are excited to see their continued success as they move into brick-and-mortars. And that's my update. So unless you all have any questions for me?
Any questions? I just want to express my admiration for the nice job Main Street's doing here with all this, and certainly I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes going on and a lot of questions that need to be answered, and, you know, a little bit of salesmanship about what this is all about and how it works, and you, your organization certainly is doing the job well because we're seeing this influx of new people moving in. So appreciate the great, great job that you're doing over there. So appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the city's support as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item 11, which is Resolution 22-101-R, awarding a facade improvement grant to Batavia Enterprises for 2 through 8 West Wilson Street. Who's got this one?
Mayor, I'm going to sit this one out since my business is in this situation.
I have it, Your Honor.
Yeah.
This is a facade improvement grant to Batavia Enterprises for the buildings on West Wilson Street from 2 to 8 is the address on West Side. They're going to be doing quite a bit of work to the facade of the building, and this is a $5,000 grant for that. They're really working hard to save all of the scroll work and, and trim work that's on the front of that building and preserve all that. So I think it's a very good use of the funds that we have, and typically, these are, you know, sometimes much smaller amounts, but this, you know, BEI has just poured a lot of money this year into a lot of different buildings, which is really nice to see because there are some buildings that needed a lot of work, and, you know, anytime even a $5,000 grant that can help make that happen, I think it's a very good thing for our downtown to not have any issues with the buildings on Wilson Street. I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. We did talk about this at the COW meeting, and Wendy was there and explained what they're, what they're doing to the building.
Want to make a motion?
Yep, I will make a motion that we approve the facade grant for 2 through 8 West Wilson Street, and it would be Resolution 22-101-R, awarding that grant to Batavia Enterprises.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, Second Ballman Soffa, for the approval of, or Resolution 22-101-R, awarding facade improvement grant to Batavia Enterprises for 2 through 8 West Wilson Street. Any conversation from the city council? Clerk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. You want to tell, I think some of the folks from, walked out to the hallway. Are they still out there, do you know? Why don't you invite them back in? They don't need to, I think they thought they shouldn't be in the meeting when they revoked. Okay, well, whatever. All right, moving to 12, which is Ordnance 22-60, an ordinance amending ordinance as adopted by the City Council of the City of Batavia, Canton, New Page Counties, Illinois, authorizing and providing for the issue of sewer revenue bonds with the IEPA of the said, with the IE, with the said city, per agreement on 119922 at the COW, and then they recommend recommending that action to the city council. So we need your approval of Ordnance 2260. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So, as we learned in committee, this is to affirm, what is it, $35 million in low-interest loans from the state of Illinois, specifically the IEPA, at just about a percent, 1.24%, which is well below what our rates are right now. We discussed the possibility of increasing that for additional work that needs to be done, but we're going to hold off at the 34, aren't it, the 35 for right now to take advantage of this low interest rate. So I would move for approval of Ordnance 22-60 for the issuance of these bonds.
Second, moved by Alderman Chansett, Second Ballman Wolf, for the approval of Ordnance 22-60. Any discussion? I would just share with you that, again, I'm getting visitors from other towns in here hearing about this, and I've had the city of Naperville over here, and they were very interested to see what had been done so far. And I also had the mayor from Diamond, Illinois, which is way down on Route 47 south of Morris, and they had a sewer problem down there, and they had to put a large water tank into their plan, and they told them the only place you could see one of those is up in Batavia before they did their renovations. So they came to look at the old and how it's now fitted in with the new. So they left very pleased. So I think we've, we continue to be the model for a lot of other towns, and I'm very proud of the fact that our staff is running this so well that we get a lot of other people in here wanting to see how Batavia's doing it and why we're doing it the right way, and it's made it easier for us to get a lot of the good grant money out of it. So I appreciate that. Any other comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none, absent.
All right, moving then to item 13, which is Ordnance 2259, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Batavia by adding new chapter 5D to Title III, implementing a retail single-use bag program. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, I'm going to leave the conversation for this one since it affects my business.
Alderman Chansett, do you have this, or who said?
I do, indeed. As we discussed in committee, the possibility of imposing a 10-cent fee for carryout types of bags, this is meant to discourage the use of the one-time disposable types of bags, specifically at retail stores, point-of-sale establishments of 5,000 square feet or more. The fee is meant to be for these carryout items of goods that you purchase. It's not meant to be for things like restaurants, services, things like pharmacy orders, or dry cleaning, things like that, and certainly not meant to be bags used inside the store, things like bagging your vegetables up, or one-time uses at places like farmer's markets. I do believe that Laura had some additional things to add, though. Is that correct?
Yeah, Laura's got, we've gotten quite a bit of conversation about this from the public, and I think a couple of them have asked that their communications be read here. So I think that's what Laura's going to do.
This is a comment from Yvonne Dinwiddie, residents, to the Batavia City Council. She asked that I read this evening. I've read the proposed bag fee ordinance 22-59. It is convoluted and a proposed costly and administrative nightmare with little verifiable evidence that bags are either single-use or that proved cleanup costs to the city would survive a cost-benefit analysis. The majority of the burden will be placed on the retail establishments and the consumers, while the city will reap 60% of the proposed fees as well as possible fines. Lines in the grocery stores will be longer as all groceries will have to be bagged before the cost of the groceries can be finalized. Baggers will be required to decide which bags are protective of goods and which are to be charged. The cost to implement and adjudicate the fee ordinance will require the employment of a city employee to manage the forms and the fee collections, as well as any possible fines. It is another administrative burden that will ultimately result in increases to taxes to residents. The ultimate cost to the retailers will be passed on to the consumers, who will have to pay higher prices in addition to the bag fees. And then she provided a list of questions that she wanted the answers to. It appears to me that bag fees is a feel-good ordinance with little or no regard to actually protecting the environment or the people. Instead of working on better recycling or promoting innovative uses for products that you deem a problem, you just exacerbate the problem by instituting fees and more expense and administrative burden. Why don't you sponsor a program for schools to have children work on innovative uses for the bags and new ways of recycling and/or repurposing? Why not reward people for being environmentally responsible instead of charging them fees and instituting penalties? I can guarantee you that if these bag fees are instituted, I will not be shopping at any store that charges the fees. In fact, I will not shop in Batavia at all. I definitely will not eat at any restaurant or visit downtown for any reason other than to pay my ridiculously high utility bills and garbage fees. And then she makes a Freedom of Information Act request for the details of every meeting where the discussions regarding the fees were undertaken. And a P.S., here's something to think about. Every item manufactured, produced, or generated on this earth comes from raw materials generated from the earth and the heavens. Therefore, it stands to reason that the earth's regenerative and filtering powers will ensure that everything generated on earth will eventually be returned to it with or without our interference. Yvonne Dinwiddie.
Okay. Mr. Hollis, you, you're, do you want to make, you communicated to the council, do you want to make some comments?
Good evening, everyone. First off, thanks for indulging me. I've sent a couple of rather lengthy emails to council and city administrator, et cetera, and I've gotten some very thoughtful and constructive responses. But as I outlined in the last one I sent on Saturday, self-questions and concerns. Correct me if I'm wrong. The objectives of this ordinance is to reduce the number of single-use bags that hit our landfills. Accurate. Educate and change behavior. Accurate. This applies to 17 businesses in Batavia only? For now, it applies to 17 businesses. So what is the go-forward? More businesses? Different items? I think it's, in my mind, it's how, how much of an impact this makes. If this works and makes an impact, and we don't collect a ton of money from it because people actually change the way they shop, and businesses change the way they, you know, sell their goods to people, then I think that's the ultimate goal, is to be in that situation where we're not collecting money because people aren't using single-use bags. And then I think at that point, if we see that this works with the businesses we have now, I don't know if that's going to become a change from the state or county or anywhere else above us, but I think, at least in my mind, the goal of this council and of the Environmental Commission is to move that forward and eventually encompass all the businesses that use single-use bags, because that's the goal, is to try to reduce that number. And if we only do it for 17 businesses, it doesn't get rid of all of them. So I'd argue it doesn't get rid of, so there's a long list of restaurants being. So if our objective is to eliminate bags, why does it apply to restaurants, fast foods?
Because that's not as big of an impact. There's not as many bags that are leaving Coach House on an average night compared to the Jewel. This is, that's apples and oranges.
Even compared to McDonald's, one person usually gets one bag when they leave McDonald's. One person can leave Jewel with 20 bags. So that's the reasoning behind going after the larger ones first.
And I don't think that there's ever a reason to not do something positive because we can't do everything. We can still do something, and that's a good something.
So I don't think it would be crazy to say that in a single day in Batavia, the fast food restaurants generate more bags than our business in a year. So why does it apply to us enough?
We had to use a cutoff of some sort, and so we followed the example that has been set forth in other instances.
It's not really a great answer.
I would agree. That, I would say that's a very good answer because that's the standard that's out there that's being applied.
Standard where?
In the town that we borrowed this, a lot of this ordinance from.
Let the entire ordinance was copied.
Like many other ordinances.
We have to start somewhere, and we used a model that has worked and provided a positive impact for the future.
So are you going to start including plastic cups?
I'd.
Single-use?
If need be.
Capons? Those are single-use. Paper? Yep.
Yeah. No, I mean, I don't have a, we don't have a plan for that. That's not, that's not the issue at hand. That's not what's filling up our stream banks. That's not what is shutting down, shutting down operations at our recycling facilities when they get loops and gum up machines and cost thousands of dollars to our taxpayers as a result. No, those are not the issue right now.
So it's only bags?
Right.
So when will it stop? At what point? I would think when the use of the bags gets down low enough that we deem that that's an acceptable level. So how are we to know that this won't be for every item that we consider desirable?
Because our, the hope on this is to educate people. I hope that the city doesn't collect a dime, to be honest with you. It's nothing about collecting money. It's about getting people to change their behaviors, and when people will have an incentive to change of behavior, they're going to. So that's, that's, it's a starting point so we can change behavior here. The bags, next thing you go to cups, we can, people will start to think, hey, I can use reusable things. I can save money in doing so and also save the environment because it's not just about filling landfills. It's destroying our oceans and our, our whole ecosystem.
By the way, I agree with all of that. I'm not against doing things that are environmentally friendly. We do them all the time. What I'm saying is that this is flawed. So let's talk about behavior for a little bit. So we're hoping to change behavior by, call it what you will, a punishment, tax, negative reen, a lot of parents here, I bet, that we all know that positive reinforcement is a much better method, changing behavior. Changing behavior, the negative reen. It's long-lasting, teaches people to make good choices, just as you said. Punishment taxes tend to be collected or implemented or are successful when people are, if people aren't watching, go right back to your. So what you're doing with this particular tax is that you're saying it's not okay in 17 places of business in this town. It's okay everywhere.
Rob, I don't think that the education plan that we're trying to put forth is going to apply to 17 businesses. It's going to apply to every retail operation in Batavia. And the reason we want to try to make sure that the education part of it is the big component of it is to actually have that impact, to have businesses on their own decide that they are no longer going to offer those single-use bags as a benefit to the environment, to their consumers. And, you know, yes, you can call it a tax, you can call it a fee, however you want. I look at it as positive reinforcement because the people that decide that they want to do something positive for the environment are rewarded by not having to pay it. And that's the positive side I see out of it. Granted, I tend to lean to be an optimist on just about everything, but I realize that there will be people that that's not, and sometimes is not possible. And to me, that's the reality. We have to do something. And, you know, it's not just about where all those bags end up, it's where all those bags came from and what does it take to create them? I mean, I was kind of surprised when I started to dig deeper into this, how much water is used to create paper bags and to create the pulp, whether it's a recycled bag from recycled paper or from new wood pulp. It's huge. And that's something I think that's going to be really detrimental to the environment in 20 or 30 years. We're gonna be fighting over water, not whether we're paying 10 cents on a bag.
Again, we have no arguments about environmental impacts. Violent agreement. Have you folks considered any alternatives to taxing? Positive reinforcement made this rewarding to the businesses? If they were to cut their use of bags or the types of bags or, you know, pretty much anything that, you know, we considered we wanted to change the behavior on, reward them, give them a little discount on their city sales tax, on their city property tax, award them by being recognized as a business that is taking steps to reduce environmental impact of the business that they're conducting? Or is it just a tax?
No, I have thought about that and reading your, your letter there, your email. I would be very uncomfortable taxing people to give incentives, taxing those that do behave responsibly towards our environment in order to pay a incentive to a business because that money would have to come from somewhere, right? Most of our money comes from taxes, from our ratepayers and from our, so why should they, that maybe, maybe behaving in an environmentally friendly way have to put the bill to give incentives for others that are making profits?
Well, you're asking me to do that.
No, we're asking the consumer. Actually, my hope is that no one has to pay 10 cents. That's my hope. And I think we can accomplish that. We can get a whole lot of people not to pay 10 cents. We can get a whole lot of people to save money.
And I think too, that the money that is generated by the 10 cents a bag fee is going to pay for an education, part of the education on it. And if we were to decide a year or two from now that we had money in that fund and we wanted to use that to try to incentivize businesses to do it, we could use that money.
Incentives for residents to do environmentally friendly behaviors. Expand our street tree program and plant trees with that money. Electrify the city, reduce people's electric burden by moving towards, we had a long list, you know, of things that might have some upfront costs. At the same time, we might have some upfront revenue before it gets to zero, which is the goal. Yeah, there's.
And I mean, this is an identifiable source that we've decided to go after. There are many other things we could do. And, you know, this happens to be the one that's out there right now that we think we can have an impact. You know, Mark's not part of this discussion, but the company that he works for has taken it upon themselves to go after this for, help me, has it been a decade or more? Yeah, that they've done that? And, you know, I guess to do more research and to find out how that has affected their bottom line or how that's affected their effectiveness in different markets might be something interesting to see. Because I think that as big as they are, that's a model. And I think, you know, I feel for you, I understand where you're at, and I know that every time something gets added, the business that I work at was not happy when we had to start collecting a local city gas tax. You know, it's another step that you, as a business owner, have to take. And unfortunately, that's where the line got drawn.
Well, you all have the power to change where the line is. I mean, doesn't it make more sense to be well-educated about the businesses that do produce the largest number of bags and are the largest problem and not do an arbitrary?
Rob, it's not, it's not arbitrary. We know that everything, everything above that number creates a tremendous amount of bags and below that creates a lot less.
Well, this is a clear case that there's no correlation with size.
I am the standing example of that is not true.
Right. Can I just interrupt for a minute? Because, and I apologize because I wasn't here last week, I was traveling for business. But what happened with, the last time we voted, we voted that we were going to do an educational program and then measure the effectiveness of that. Can I get a recap of that? Because I missed out last week.
The educational campaign was always going to be followed very quickly by the fee being added.
Yeah, the decision was that both things were going to move forward. Council directed staff to draft the ordinance, but that the ordinance would not become effective.
We haven't done the education program yet?
We just hired the firm the week after the meeting that it was authorized. So the intent is for the campaign to be.
The purpose of it was to see if we even have to do this, if we could teach before having to penalize.
There was no way of measuring whether or not it was effective.
How do we measure that it's a problem then?
Well, we know, we know there's millions of bags being.
How are we gonna know if this is effective?
Because we'll have, we'll see what comes in on day one of the fee and what comes in on day 365 of the.
But you won't be able to measure how many bags are used in the beginning and in the end. You're just gonna measure fines.
No, fees. The amount of fees.
Right, fees.
Right. I don't know if we're gonna ask the retailers ahead of time to punch it in at a zero cost before the fee is implemented. In working with them on.
I just don't know if it's, if that's a practical thing for them to do yet. We have to work with them and, and see if they will put that at the point of sale to record a zero-fee item while we're doing the educational campaign and track that. But we also will have to solve for whether sales are increasing or decreasing over the same period in order to know if, you know, that is actually correlated to our educational campaign or is it something that's happening in the economy that's causing the, the sales to be higher or lower? And I don't expect that those private businesses are gonna, you know, share sales data with me.
Plus, at the end of the year, we might not know if some businesses decide to stop charging the fee and eating it themselves or building it into their prices or not and just paying it that way. So counting the bags or the fees might not necessarily be inaccurate. It might be as accurate as guesstimating the effectiveness of an educational program, I would think.
I mean, I would hope that they wouldn't be falsifying their reporting to us. I mean, they can't do that on liquor tax or gas tax, I would hope, in the same vein.
Well, this is, this is gonna be seen as an item, isn't it? A line item?
Right.
It's not, it's not a tax.
Right, right, but it's being.
You're paying for the.
Right, but it's being reported to us in the same way that liquor tax and, and the gas tax is paid to us.
Well, we're not entirely sure how it's gonna be reported, are we?
So the, but the ordinance, the ordinance will read a fee and the amount of 10 cents is imposed on each customer for each carryout, single-use bag. So it's a fee on the customer. It's a, to roll it into a cost, that's not necessarily the fee applied.
So the, the businesses, how we pay our taxes is that the businesses self-report to us the number of bags they use, and then they'll submit 6 cents times the number of bags they say that they're, they've provided during that period of time. So it also, you know, it's kind of an honor system.
Well, I'd like to suggest that since this is at the end of this year or going to be in another month, that we, if we let this thing go forward, you know, I think it's a good experiment to find out if Batavia or anybody else is really willing to do this. I've had, again, several other mayors in the area ask me about this thing, and I was a little bit reluctant to share too much information because I told them, we're still trying to honestly figure out how we're gonna do this ourselves. And I guess where I'm going here is I would like to suggest that if we start it now, that six months from now, in June of this coming year, we bring this back before the committee and have a little conversation about what's been the results in the first six months since we put this thing on the street of Batavia.
In the meantime, can we lobby the county? I mean, I preferred if there was a tri-city.
Well, right now, we're the only ones doing this, I believe, and nobody else is doing it.
In King County, that is.
What?
In King County, that's.
At St. Charles, St. Charles wants to jump on board. And Elgin.
But they, have they activated it yet?
Environmental commissions are working on a very similar thing.
Well, I know that, I'm just saying, nobody's, you know, we're really kind of right at the beginning, and I'm, I don't have any problem with this, we're right at the beginning of this whole thing. And we're trying to, but I think there's gotta be some education and some monitoring so that we can get over all these concerns that people have about, are they using it? Will they use it? How much is it costing? Are we losing any business? You know, and why only 17, as Mr. Hollis has just raised? Why, why don't we just enact it on everybody? You know, that's, so those are the, the questions that are out there. And I think we need to probably have an ongoing conversation with the council. If you approve this tonight, then in six months, we'll bring this back to committee and see where we're at with it.
And I think that's what we really agreed to at our last county meeting, that we would do that. And I think, you know, again, this is my feelings towards it, is I feel like if we enacted on 17 businesses and we see, okay, they sold 25,000 bags in the first six months, and then the second six months, they sell 5,000, we know that's a huge reduction. If that works on that level at those businesses, then is the next step to move it forward to every business to try to make that size reduction on all of the businesses? So that we get to the point where we are making an impact and not just, you know, twitching the needle from one side of the needle to the other by saying, oh, we're only gonna do it on businesses that, you know, generate 1,000 bags a day, like a Jewel or Kohl's or something like that. So, you know, I really feel like we have to see, one, how this implementation works, and if it does work, then we have to expand it. If our goal is to get rid of the bags, then we have to expand it after that.
But I think if we get an agreed-upon six-month review process and build into it, we'll, we'll know some facts and figures then about what is or is not happening here.
There, there is repealer language in there, so we will revisit this after one year is what, what, after it takes effect. So it does not get to take effect for seven more months.
That's right, it doesn't, it doesn't take effect till, I'm just looking at it right now, it's July 1st, 2023.
Education campaign starts, and then in six months, the fee.
The fee starts.
Picks in, and then six months after that, absolutely have to like, do a full report on.
And I'm sure that the environmental commission would help us with that report so that way we can have a way to gauge how this is working.
I just want to point out, I think we all want the same end game for the ecology in that. And it's a passion, I think, for the council as a whole, but I counter only because I have a passion to make this a business-friendly community, and I have a passion to keep the cost of living here down low. So I'm just looking for a balance. I'm not trying to say screw with the bags or whatever. I want to make that clear, but it, it does seem, I don't like the fact that while it seems cute to be the leader and we're the first ones to do it, I don't like that. I'd rather it be the whole county or tri-cities so we don't lose a competitive advantage. As small as 10 cents is, it multiplies, 25,000 was your first.
Right.
Estimate of, and who knows, you know, where that, that lies. But on the other end, everything we do, I think there's a better way to, to go about this and to make it more equitable across all the businesses. Because I agree that it's random that square footage that puts out five bags a day has to pay, but a small business that's putting out 200 bags doesn't have to do it.
Could we have you, I'm sorry, sir, introduce yourself for the record? Thank you.
Jeff, we got another comment here.
And I apologize as well, I was not here last week when this was discussed in committee. I do have some concerns about this. I've discussed it before when we've discussed the Climate Action Plan. I'm all on board for leading and encouraging sometimes when it comes to the enacting part. I'm hesitant a little bit. And, and this is one of the things that I have reservations about. With that said, I realize that it had strong support in committee. And I would be willing to support it if, if we do make a strong commitment that it's something that we're gonna come back to regularly to see if it's actually something that's working and making a difference as opposed to just, you know, instituting a tax on our residents and on our businesses that, you know, it's really gonna be them who have the burden of managing it. So since I missed last week, which I apologize for, I just wanted to share my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
You, Your Honor, I, I view this as, this is encouraging a change of habits. And I know for myself personally, my habit is when I go to Aldi, I always, always, always remember my bags because I know I'll have to purchase them at Aldi if I forget them, always. When I go to Target, I never remember my bags, even though I know that they have a 10-cent rebate if you bring your own bags in. But that never incentive, gives me the incentive to bring my own bags into Target because I just forget every time. So the whole idea of this is to change habits. And it's not to bring in more money into the city, it's not that type of a tax, it's to encourage all of us just to be more thoughtful. And sometimes that means when you know that you'll have to purchase the bag, you're more likely to bring the bag with.
May I speak?
Sure.
I'm Carolyn Burnham from the Batavia Environmental Commission. I just want to touch on a few of the points that you were talking about and Mr. Hollis talked about as well. Just regarding the 5,000 square feet, I mean, it does feel arbitrary, and I do feel like his business is a little bit of an outlier compared to all the other businesses and the number of bags that go out of the store. You know, and there's two reasons for that, and one is to get the, what we talked about before, the, the businesses that produce the most bags, right? The Jewel, the Kohl's, even the Walgreens, the Target, the Menards, all those places that produce all those bags, right? So we're gonna, like we said, we're gonna make the greatest impact with those type of stores. But as we keep our bags in the car to go to Menards and Target and Kohl's and like that, that we're gonna have them when we go to the little guys too, because we're gonna have the bag in our car. And right now, I mean, some people keep a bag with them and they can take it to one store. So it's just about finding a way to, to build that habit of getting the bags, because we're a car community, in people's cars so they can take to the store. And the second part is that we really wanted to. And the second part is that we really wanted to not be too onerous for people that have really very small businesses, for that accounting is harder for them than someone that has an electronic point-of-sale system that can be programmed, and they've done it in other communities and other states. So, you know, this has been done other places. It feels like we're the first. But, you know, we could look up to Woodstock, who's been doing it for a while. We've been looking at Oak Park, that's been doing it for a while. There's other communities. There's all these businesses that we're talking about now, with the exclusion of Mr. Hollis, have done it in other communities. And all the research that we've seen, and we have, we did not take this lightly when we brought it toward, uh, to you. It, the research said that the incentives don't work. And we did not want to bring a fee. Well, what is the fee that worked? And the research that we read said a 10-cent fee seemed to be that mark where it will change behavior without being too onerous. In the same token, you know, no one has to pay it. They can even bring their old plastic bags and use them again if they want to. We're, we're not telling them what kind of bag they can bring to the store.
Makes them not one-use bags, I know, doesn't it? Technicality.
I, I don't care what kind of bags they bring if they're using them again.
Then how do you, um, so then any bag is really not a one. I, I only, uh, I, I'm just gonna be, uh, devil's advocate on, on one point. And I agree, I, I keep bags in my car, but I wouldn't want to go into a fine clothing store and stuff my purchases into a used jewel bag, like, is there a way to work around that anomaly or that difference from one retailer to the next? I agree with the, the Jewels and the Menards and those, and, and I reuse them, but how do you apply it to a, a retailer just because of the square footage and, and lack of bags?
So I'm gonna go back to your fine retailer question and tell you that my background is in television market research. And I can tell you that that bag has been very well marketed to you. That if we, if it's important to us what kind of bag that goes into, that, that just, to me, connects to how we've been marketed to.
Oh, no doubt about it. Shipping, you know, how you receive things, and that's part of the experience and how you feel about it, so.
And we're hoping to change that. That one little piece.
Well, with that, I will be against this, and I think I'm clearly the minority, but, um, it does seem arbitrary, and it seems to penalize the wrong people I don't want to penalize. Um, so we will see how the education works and how the results fare out.
Alderman Chancet has had a sound.
Are you finished, or do you still have some more you want?
Did anybody have any other questions for me on the environmental commission? I do have one other thing I wanted to say, and I really do want the data. If there is any way that we can get data prior to the start of the fee, I think that would be outstanding. You know, even the start of a March or April prior to the July fee, I think it, it's absolutely essential to get a, get a feel for it before the actual fee starts, so we can monitor that over time. Because we really want it to be effective, and if it doesn't make any difference, then there's no point to it.
Well, and that's where I think that if you were to go to those 17 businesses and ask, you know, what are their monthly bag purchases? You know, what do they, what do they buy for supply for bags per month? You may be able to figure that out as, as far as what, you're not looking for what their sales are, but how many bags do they buy every month? What do they have for supply for that? And, you know, from that, then they can figure out as well, too. I'm sure on the ones that I watched online, the point-of-sales that add stuff like that, it's one more keystroke for them to have to say, okay, this person paid for plastic, a single-use bag, or paid for the paper, single-use bag, because it's just a key item in the point-of-sale. So I don't think that's a huge, you know, thing that the, the business would have to do.
Thank you, Carolyn. Alderman Chancet, did you have something you wanted to ask?
I do. I, I guess I, I add as, as a comment, um, that it, it does take time to change behaviors. Uh, I guess I would encourage us all to be patient, um, for the results of, of a campaign like this. We are getting out there in front of a lot of people. I think it's great to be in a leadership role. I don't think that we're going about this in any sort of reckless way, and I think even people who oppose the concept still even, the very heart seem to agree that this is the, the right direction to head in. Uh, Mr. Hollis, I, if I were there, I would, I would, you'd be able to see the, the smile on my face here. I'm not picking on you. But I would tell you to, to walk out of your parking lot and, and look to your left and look to your right for two examples of, of patience and, and impact on, on the ecology. Um, all of the things that we've done, cities up and down Fox River over, over the years to improve the water quality, uh, the runoff, uh, the treatment of water, what we dump into our river has improved over time. And if you look to your right, uh, uh, or just very close by, uh, there's, there are eagle nests. And the EPA tells us that that is, that is the sign that your watershed has improved. That the, uh, the bald eagle, the American eagle will, will make a nest in a place where uh, resources are abundant, water is clean, and things are good. And I know that when I was a child, that was not the case. We did not have eagles flying around here. Uh, I also look, I say, look to your, to your left, uh, to a world-class charitable organization, Goodwill. Um, I thrift with my friends. I remember the first time we went into the Goodwill last fall, and we had no bags, and there was a sign that caught us by surprise that said that the Goodwill is no longer offering plastic bags. Um, for a second, I was a little bit upset. So I thought, oh, great, now I'm gonna have to go look for a toad or something like that in here. I just ended up buying something else to put my stuff in, because I didn't plan ahead, but they also didn't do a real good communicating, uh, educating that they were about to do this, uh, uh, with their clientele. Um, that said, I bring a bag with now when I go thrifting, and I actually view the Goodwill organization with goodwill and congratulate them for what they've done to change the behaviors and make a, a small impact. They're not saving the world by doing this, but there's definitely doing something in, in the right direction here. Um, I'm a hypocrite. I go to McDonald's a couple times a week and get single-use McDonald's bags. I am part of the problem. Uh, so I need to change my behaviors and, uh, other assets, aspects of my life, and I, after listening to this discussion tonight, will probably try to do that a little bit better. Um, but in the grand scheme of things, 10 cents on a bag, uh, not a, a big deal. I will remember my Aldi bags that I have in my trunk and from all these other retailers, retailers that I've been buying them uh, from to support this general idea. So I would encourage anybody who's on the fence to just go along with this for a six month, or a year, or a year and a half, and see what kind of impact that we have. And let's watch the cities around us, look to Batavia for the leadership example that we provide. Um, and I guess if there's not a lot of further discussion, I would encourage you, we call the question very soon.
Alderman Moore?
I want to talk about, I have many constituents and residents and friends that do oppose this. I also have many that are for it. I'm looking forward to the educational campaign. I'm looking forward to these businesses counting and getting the statistical data prepared and ready for us to look at it before we implement this fee in July. So like, like the environmental commission just said, it is going to be essential that we see this data and we track this data and talk about it every six months to make sure it is either working or we come up with a better solution. That is going to be the key. Many things are flawed. And what we do is we look at those things and we improve upon them as we see the flaws and try to make them better each time. This is a starting point. We need to figure out what works, what doesn't work, and improve on the things that don't work.
Alderman Beck?
Uh, one, one final comment from me, um, is that I want, well, first, I want to thank our environmental commission for all their hard work on this. Um, and to remind everyone that we are being advised by a commission full of, um, professionals, uh, people that work in environmental fields, people that have advanced degrees in environmental studies, that this isn't a, a passion project for most people. This is a vocation, this is a profession. You know, we never tell Mark that he's being passionate about IT infrastructure when he's consulting on, you know, what we're installing in our chambers. Um, that it just, I don't want to minimize their expertise in this, in this process and the advice that they give us. Um, because to Yvonne Dinwiddie's comment that the, the earth absolutely will eventually absorb all of the impacts and all of the waste, um, that we have produced. Whether that earth will be habitable for us to live there anymore, once it's done absorbing it, is a very different thing. And those of us that have been in the research world on how these systems that keep us alive work and understand the pressure and the threats that they are under, know that this is, this is necessary and this is overdue, and we're working in time scales that are um, getting frightening in the amount of climate anxiety that's on younger people these days. Even if, even though they can't vote for us, for me, I feel like I represent them and want to speak for them and want to leave them in a better world and want them to have a resilient, amazing city that they want to come back and live in. I'm talking about my kids right now, actually. I'm just always thinking, like, how do I make them come back and, and live in Batavia? So, um, that's my, that's my last comment.
Alderman Sulfah?
Totally support the educational process. I oppose the fee.
I mean, I guess I wonder if we go ahead and pass this tonight, do we have a, a situation ready to, that's going to start the educational process?
Yes, we've hired a, a marketing firm to develop a campaign to begin, um, early next year.
I, I knew that. I just wanted to ask the question so you'd say it, so it got in the record here that we are. So this will be a fee that's the cities, how much are we, do we have a quote for this company that we're paying? How much are we paying them?
Um, they gave us an estimate of, uh, on the, the low side, about $6,500, or it could be up to, um, $8,900. And they do that because they're gonna bill us for exactly the number of hours that it takes them to create the campaign, rather than just one flat rate.
I don't know, I guess, I, I thought about this over the weekend, I wanted to discuss with a friend. And one of the things I thought of was, it's, you know, very similar to, or it's in some ways comparable to the fact that we have laws not to speed. And we ticket people when they do speed because we try to reduce the speed to make it safer. And we have campaigns where we put signs out in people's front yards to try to remind them and, you know, encourage them to slow down. Well, it doesn't always work when you do that. People will hear or not hear what they want to hear. And sometimes they have to be reminded different ways. I think, again, I really feel that this is much more of an encouragement. Um, I look at it too as the businesses, if the businesses are buying a quarter or a tenth of the bags they were buying last year or two years ago, this is a success. You know, the businesses have less cost and, you know, to me, that's another win from a, a business side.
Well, I will tell you that on the other side of this, and I'm not opposing this, but I'm just saying that there's other questions that are out there, and one of the questions that comes to my office several times now is, okay, if you get rid of the bags, are we still gonna have some ability to get something to go around and pick up the dog poop?
Right. I totally understand, and there are a myriad of options for that.
Well, I think if there is, you know, if we do this.
And that's part of the education campaign is to, people to understand that, one, the single-use bag as, you know, a vessel to pick that up is not the best thing for it. And two, that there's all kinds of other options, and ask, go into any vet that people deal with, and they have the options. Go into any pet store, and they have the options.
That's information we need to get out to the world.
Exactly. That's education.
Alderman Lee? Um, I would just say that we know the fee works. Uh, anecdotally, if you go into Aldi, uh, you'll see very few people buying a bag. They bring their own bags, uh, and they've been doing that for decades. Uh, I remember, uh, when I was still in grade school in the Aldi on Wheat, on Roosevelt Road in Wheaton, you had to pay for a bag back in the eighties. So this has been around and it's worked. It works for them. They, they, the fee works, so I think, I, you know, know of no better way to start this, uh, educating people um, and getting, uh, less single-use bags, uh, into our waterways and landfills and.
All right, do we have somebody who wants to make a motion here, or?
I move, we approve ordinance 22-59. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of ordinance 22-59 mending the municipal code of the city of Batavia to new chapter 5D to Title III, implementing a retail single-use bag program. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
No.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Yes.
Sulfah?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Ayazi?
Yes.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
No.
Vogel Singer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Rizzato?
Yes.
10 yes, 4 no, 1 absent. I'm sorry, 3 no, 1 absent.
The ordinance is, is approved then by a vote of 10 yes, 3 no, 1 absent. And I just want to say that we will be making sure that educational campaign does hit the street and we get information out about this, because this really has, I think, got a lot of people scratching their head as to what we're really trying to do here, so we need to put something together that really shares that with the community. All right. Moving then to 14, the administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the Imagine Theater expansion permit has now been issued. Um, there were some delays on the second permit, issues with the water, uh, main location on that property, but we think we got that uh, resolved. Oak and Swine will be opening under a new name. They'll be called The Goat as soon as we're able to update their, uh, liquor license for them with the new name. And Chicken Salad Chick reports that, um, that store will be open December 6th. We also met with, uh, the company that's doing the hotel study for us, and I'm happy to report that their financial analysis, analysis shows strong support um, that Batavia is ready for a hotel here. Um, they are going to be reviewing some potential sites, and then we'll provide a final written report that we will publish to all of you, and of course, have up on our website for any of those hotel developers out there to take a look at. In Public Works, the Streets Department, they did an awesome job picking up the leaves this, this year. They were incredibly efficient given the fact that they all just seemed to come down at once, one weekend. Um, and they completed the scheduled third and final leaf pickup today. The remodeling project at City Hall is progressing well. Uh, we've got the rough-in for our HVAC, electric, plumbing is nearly complete, and, um, now they're going to be onsite installing a new staircase in the police lobby. Um, and then also the water main project that's happening outside the building, that's progressing very well, but the, um, the rock excavation that has to be done is kind of slowing the progress down. Um, contractors doing a really good job of moving traffic safely around that area because that is a hub of activity from morning, noon, and night. Um, and so they're gonna be working Monday through Wednesday of this coming week, but no work over, um, the holiday. Um, as you could see when you came here for the meeting tonight, they also do a good job of putting the earth back in and covering it so that we've got a flat surface to, uh, drive over when they are not here working. So we appreciate, uh, the work that they're doing and appreciate the opportunity to do this much-needed update to our City Hall facility. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Alora? Thank you. We have other business from anybody?
I do, Your Honor. Just a little bit, real quick, um, just a reminder for everybody, or anybody that doesn't know, um, the championship game for the Bulldogs will be at 4:00 PM at U of I, Memorial Stadium, and, uh, it will be broadcast on WCIU on channel 50, if anybody wants to watch it, if they can't go down.
Thank you for that, because I was gonna have Alora put together a special news item on that one, because I can't begin to tell you how many times the mayor's ears got blistered this last time about, they can't get to the game. They got all these technologies.
Well, we, we, I will say, for small businesses in town, we had a lot of places that had the game on and a lot of people there, and just anecdotal, anecdotally, we had tons of communications during the game of people all over the country. And just anecdotally, we had tons of communications during the game of people all over the country that couldn't get to the game or were gone for, you know, the holiday, whatever, starting early. Um, we had a group in the Dells, which is a great picture of like a 12-by-12 screen on the side of the dome in the water park they were in, with 20 families that were up there, were watching the game at one time up there, so. And everything from The Moose and Brother Chip Brewing down in North Aurora, all the way through just about every business downtown that had space, that had a TV that was connected to the internet, they were broadcasting the game.
Every space that had tech support.
Yep. Anybody that knew how to get to the game was watching the game there, so. And it was a great game. So now we got another shot at Mount Carmel.
Are you done?
Yep, I'm done.
So I'm gonna pick up on what Alderman Wolf just said, and first of all, I want to publicly state my admiration for Alderman Wolf and his partner, Mr. Lundberg, for their great job this year and really carrying the message of the Bulldogs forward. Uh, I've talked to so many people who, that became a weekly activity for, especially a lot of the folks in our senior living communities, had kind of like groups that would get together and go in and watch the Bulldog game. And between Wolf and Lundberg, they got to know the teams and they started having favorite players, and so we were very, very fortunate to have on this council somebody that probably could do the job of a full-time sportscaster if you wanted to give it to him, because he, he really does know the job and does a great job. So this coming Sunday, the game, as Alderman Wolf just said, is gonna be Saturday and starting down in Champaign at 4 o'clock. And then they're gonna have to probably play, what, three hours for the game? So that takes us to 7:00, and then they kind of have to clean the team up a little bit and then put them on a bus and give them a three-hour ride back to Batavia, which probably puts them in there sometime after 10:00 at night. Now, this past weekend, uh, the Batavia Fire and Police Department stepped up and really helped us out, because I had the coach on my phone, and he was calling me and giving me reports as to where the team was and the buses coming back. And so finally, we got the buses back in Batavia at 8:45. And that was right on the edge of whether or not we should be blowing sirens, but everybody was pretty fired up, so we met them out at the Batavia Apartments and the, what, Eastside Engine and the Battalion Chief, and I rode along in the car just to see what was gonna happen. And it was, it was really nicely done. I mean, there was people all along Wilson Street from one end to the other. Some people would come out of their houses and they were just really applaud. I really think it gave the Police and Fire Departments a real moment to shine in the eyes of their people, where here is the Police and Fire out there really supporting the town and showing everybody and making sure it's safe and all this. So we look good, I would tell you, at the end of the day. So this coming weekend, we got another shot at it. Now, last Saturday, when the Fire Department was, I believe the Batavia Fire Department in the first few hours of last Saturday, I think we had 29 calls. I've never seen it that busy. And they were in-between calls when it got time for the buses to leave Batavia High School and go up to the game. And to the Fire Department's credit, they got the truck out there just as the last bus turned on the road to go out of town, so they weren't gonna be at front. So I told them, well, let's just forget it. We don't want to cause a big scene here. So then when we did meet them on the way back, everybody was, and of course, they'd won the game and everybody was really high. So this weekend, because it looks like we're gonna come in here after 10:00 at night, I've talked to Coach Perron at some length today, he'd rather come in in a darkened thing next Saturday night, because it's getting too late to be blowing sirens and whatever, but we are going, we've invited them, the team downtown at about 4:00 on Sunday, and they're gonna meet down at, first, in Island Avenue by the old City Hall, and then the Fire Department's coming down with a couple trucks, and we're gonna put the team down there with the trucks, and then we're gonna bring them up Island Avenue. And the Batavia Community Band has changed their schedule a little bit, and of course, Mr. Heath, the director, is a Batavia High School teacher of some longevity, so he's all excited, and so he's got a bunch of Batavia High School music that they're gonna play for a few minutes while the team's unloading, and then we're gonna put them all on the Pegbon stage for a couple of pictures and do a public thank you to them, but you have to appreciate that this is all coming at really weird times for us. So one of the things we've always tried to do, and we are going to do this again this year, is when you have a winning season like this, and you may remember we had the track-and-field team in here last spring after they won the state championship. Well, in this one, you know, we're, we're at the state championship, so win or lose, I think they should be honored, because that really is a deep honor for them. So we're gonna bring, now, once we get the names of everybody on the team, and we're gonna bring them in here to probably the first or second council meeting in either December or January, and let them all come in, and we'll present each one of them with a proclamation that I'll have you pass. And then we're also gonna add the cheerleaders to this name of group, because they really have done, I'm told by others, really a nice job this year. So we're gonna try to honor everybody that's been partnering the game. So then after the team gets out of here, 4:30, 5:00, I had, interesting little tidbit, I had a grandmother show up here today and wanted to talk to me, and she says that she's part of a grandmother's group that goes to the Batavia football games, and they're all grandmothers of team players. And the girls were a little bit upset, because Saturday night, when we brought them in out on East Wilson Street, they were scattered up and down the street, and they had their phones out, and they were trying to take pictures of the fire truck and whatever. Well, out there in the 700, 800 block of East Wilson, it's pretty dark, and they didn't get good pictures. So she said, if you're gonna do something on, after, she said, I know you're gonna do something for the team. I said, yes. She says, can you have it kind of in daylight? Because, so, we're gonna try to daylight this thing a little bit. That's why we're saying about 4:15. There's, I was out there today looking at how, how the sun was at that time. I think there should be enough daylight to get it done. When they get done, then the community band's gonna go into a regular concert that they've been practicing for, and then at some point, I think around 5:00, 5:30, Santa Claus arrives, again with, I think with the help of the Batavia Fire Department. So he'll be here, and there'll be, there'll be a lot of people wandering around down here between, first, the team and then Santa Claus. And so we'll have an interesting afternoon on Sunday down here, so supposedly the weather's gonna be pretty good. So I'd invite everybody from the community down here from 4:00 on, stay as long as you want, go to a restaurant, enjoy the day, because there's gonna be a lot of people here, I'm sure, between the two activities. So, uh, we got a lot to be happy about Batavia these days with how this thing has all kind of come together and thank the Bulldogs for a great season, so. Uh, that's the end of my report, uh, and I guess we need to have a motion to go in the executive session for the setting of price of land for sale.
So moved.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Connolly. Clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Thank you. Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved.
Okay, I sent an email for those online. Um, the first one I sent was for tomorrow night, but now the second one I sent was Monday night.
Now they tell me I gotta do another roll call, because we're in executive session.
We are not. We have to end this, otherwise it's...
We have to get the, everybody online into the next one.
So what do, what do we wanna do?
We're gonna wait for five minutes.
And then we're gonna have a...
And then we'll have roll call in executive session.
Well, Laura started talking, I'm just trying to be supportive.
She's trying to tell everybody online what to do.
Oh.
So, we're good.